Okay, we're all set to start. Welcome to the Water Selectment Sewer Commissioners February 21st, 2018 meeting. The first item on the agenda was for 645 for an executive session. Do I hear a motion on that?
Make a motion to amend the agenda to move that till the end of the meeting.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next item is a public comment. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Approve meeting minutes, February 12th, 2018 regular session. So mode.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the next item is February 12th, 2018 executive session.
Make motion approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next item is September 6th, 2017 regular session. Do I hear a motion?
So mode.
Second.
A motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next item, Mr. Crowley?
I'll make a motion to approve the payables warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next item is Adam Menad, Assistant Planning Central Mass Regional Planning Commission Hazards Mitigation Plan. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Adam Menad, CMRPC. So presenting what we've worked on for West Borlson the past year. We've worked with Anita and several members of the town, including Police Chief Dennis Minich, Butch Jackson, Fire Chief Thomas Welch, Michael Covini, Jonathan Fitch, and Bill Moulton from the Feltner Conservation Recreation. We've been working on your Hazards Mitigation Plan for about a year now. I came here last fall to give you a presentation of what we're working on. The reason I'm here tonight is to present you with the final plan, to give you a summary of the work we've done. The plan is currently approved as it stands by MIMA and FEMA, and I'm going to ask you to vote to on a resolution to adopt the plan tonight. So for those of you unfamiliar with Hazards Mitigation, Hazards Mitigation is the effort to reduce the loss of life and property by lusting the impacts of natural disasters. Mitigation is not a disaster response. The goal is to reduce hazards before disasters occur. So by adopting this plan as approved by FEMA, it will allow the town to receive non-emergency fatal disaster assistance and mitigation funding as mandated under the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. The grant program opens up, the grant program this plan opens up include the Hazards Mitigation Grant Program, the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant Program, and the Flood Mitigation Grant Program. It will also allow residents to receive from funds from Massachusetts or West Borlson, if Massachusetts or West Borlson are receiving emergency funds from FEMA in a presidential disaster. The Disaster Grant Program is for applying for funds before hazard emergency strikes and for after an emergency strikes. So some of the greatest natural risks that we found that affect West Borlson are flooding, particularly in the long West Borlson Street by the Gates Brook area. A lot of areas flood because of this Brook. So I want to again thank the people that have been involved in this plan. There are numerous members that have been met several times over the course of the past year. They're instrumental in really letting us know what impacts West Borlson. You'll note the planning timeline. I think it's on your second page or bottom of the first page, five-year update. This plan is required to be updated every five years, so we'll be back to talk about this in 2023. Some of the mitigation strategies we identified, that were identified by the mitigation team, they're separating into four categories. The first category is structure infrastructure product projects. These are the brick-and-mortar approaches, generally the more expensive approaches to mitigation. The next category is preparedness and response action. These look to make sure systems are in place to efficiently and effectively administer hazard mitigation. The third category is education and awareness programs. They're generally very cost savings while still being effective. They include ways to educate the public to be aware of resources, procedures, to reduce confusion and damage in the midst of an emergency. The last category is local plans and regulations. The suggestion is to look at plans that already exist or to develop safety mitigation regulations to prevent the chances of hazards having severe effects on residences, businesses, and town management. So under the first category, one of the strategies we developed, which is already in place to prevent power droughts, is to have a thorough tree trimming and tree wire insulation program. You've already been doing this quite well. Something we encourage you to continue. Under category B, is update your evacuation plan. This is something that CMRPC over the past several years has been working with West Borlson with. You have some major roads coming through town, and making sure these plans are updated is an important task. So I encourage you to keep working on that, and CMRPC intends to keep working on the evacuation plan. Category C and education and awareness programs, one of the strategies is to educate the public about what they can do to reduce the effects of drought, something that impacted Massachusetts to a large degree recently, 2016. Simple mailing can inform people not to water during the day when Simple mailing can inform people not to water during the day when most water evaporates anyways, and to plant native drought-resistant, pollinator-friendly plants, simple steps to take, educating the public about things they can do, be it mailing, social media, website, simple tasks that can really make an impact, save water. The file strategy that we talked about, category, is to, just integrate disaster mitigation into all of your planning. The information gathered in the report and solutions found to reduce the effects of hazards, uses to act on them. Though you can still apply for grants that I mentioned earlier without acting on any of these strategies, implementing mitigation strategies does save you money. The multi-hazard mitigation council found that if every dollar spent on hazard mitigation saves society about $4, so taking steps ahead of time does, does matter, does have an impact. So with that, I hope you've all had a chance to review the plan, and I'd like to ask you to vote to adopt the plan so I can submit your vote to FEMA and have it officially adopted, and you can start applying for grants if you so choose.
Any of you have anything to add to this?
I just want to say that there was really good collaboration between our department heads and with the municipal, like, plant water department and DCR on trying to identify areas of concern in town and putting these different strategies into place. So I think, you know, I would hope you would have a comfort level to know that the, that the plan that's here and that has been, you know, put forward is a common sense approach to deal with some known issues that we have in town, and I, I would recommend that the board approve this plan.
Does any of the board have any questions in regards to this?
The, looking on the first page, you got all the local partners, the department heads, they're all on board, every one of them has endorsed this plan, or has, has there been an official, an official endorsement by the department heads of the plan?
Yes, they, they all provided their feedback and, and weighed in on this final version before it was put into the state.
Can I ask one? It looks like there are so many plans in the preparedness, the last one, local plans and regulations. We have all of those, we get the funding and then go for the plans. Are those regulations are in place now? I'm talking about the section B.
Yeah, I think some of them might be currently in place. For example, let's see, the transportation projects, that, that's already being taken place. You have DOT projects or your highway department, they have to follow certain guidelines, they're already in place. Some of those stuff you already are doing, and we just kept them in the plan, so if you do decide to go for funding, it's already there.
So some of them are not there too?
Some of them are not in place currently, no.
Okay, so those plans will be developed in the future?
If you so choose.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have anything you wanted to add? I know you're here for another issue tonight, but do you have anything you want to say in regards to this, because you were one of the...
No, most of the, you know, points, there've been reoccurring problems and, you know, we're just highlighting them, and, you know, everybody gave their input, and again, most of them are, it's not just my department, but like the water department affected, you know, the highway, and everyone was at that table and pointed out that need to be addressed, and they were, so.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have any grants, once we approve this, assuming FEMA buys off on it, are there any grants that we're planning to apply for to accomplish some of these things at this point, or is this just a...
Yes, actually, there is a culvert replacement grant program that's coming up that Butch is going to an informational meeting about, I think it's next week, the next week or so.
Think so.
Yes, so we're poised, ready to start taking advantage of these.
We need to, in order to go for those, we need to have this plan in place.
This will help us in our consideration for application.
Guarantee anything, but it will help us. Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt that?
Make a motion to adopt the hazard mitigation plan?
A second.
I have a motion, a second, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would just like to thank Adam for all of his help in coordinating all of this. Thank you. Tomorrow, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Chief Welsh. Chair up now.
Where do we start, Mike?
Anywhere you want to go, but on the list it says ambulance rates.
Okay. I've also invited one of my lieutenants about the second item we're going to be talking about is the ambulance and the fire truck purchase. So before we get to the...
We have ambulance rates, write-offs, and then status of fire truck and AFG grant application. So we can start with the ambulance rates?
Sure.
Okay.
That's the packet that I handed out to you, yes. So in the first paragraph, once a year, we need to review the ambulance rates, and they need to be approved by the board. So what I have done, I have walked through them with Anita earlier, and we put a little spreadsheet of the, the area towns around us and their billing rates. As you remember, last year, we went to the bundling concept. We did not go up on, on our rates, we just accepted that bundling concept. The year went flawlessly with no, you know, outrageous complaints or anyone questioning that type of billing procedure, so it was smooth. So this year, I've decided to take a look at the area towns around us about the same size and look at their ambulance rates. And as you look at the docket, three towns that mirror ours are about $100 more for the same service. And what we have to remember is in that BLS service, they have not adopted the bundling concept, so they're still short whatever their line for the airways was in oxygen, those are not included in that rate. Ours have that included in it. So the long story short is we're about $100 less than Rutland, Westminster, and Holden without even those rates included. The only one lower than us in our immediate area is Sterling. So I put it to the board, I've recommended that we go up about 10% just on the BLS rates to bring us in line to what the going rate is out there. With the cost of running the ambulance service to a 24-hour, union-negotiated staff, the cost of equipment, the maintaining of this equipment, I feel is, it will take a little bit of the burden away from the ambulance receipts that we've lost through decreased compensation, because I believe a lot of our residents have moved from a private insurance agency to Medicaid, Medicare, and we're getting far less than what we used to get for these We looked at the numbers, I had explained to Anita, about 300 calls out of our 1,000 calls are BLS, so we had talked, and I stand corrected, it was about $30,000 that will increase our rates, which the town looks at every year, so.
Okay, does anybody have any questions in regards to that mission?
Yes.
Chief, did we lose the contract from the jail, or are we, what's...
They went to a private service.
Right.
They've contracted with a private service, just as some of the nursing homes have contracted with a private service.
Right.
We are still the first responding ALS ambulance to that. For certain type of medical calls, they are instructed that we are supposed to be the first responding unit notified. Does it happen? Most of the time, but, and we're also their backup, so when they can't get a truck to fulfill their, their private, we do that. And to be honest with you, for what we were getting, and for the times that our ambulance was out of service, for the residents that do pay for that service, it's, it's, a lot of time was spent on those calls, and what we got back was very little.
Right, I mean, I don't have a question, I was just wondering, my next question was going to be, do they pay what everybody else pays?
We go after them, they have a rate that they pay through their insurance company.
Okay.
A lot of times, the prisoners are moving so, in and out so fast that our insurance company isn't getting it quick enough before they're released, and now we're going to their private insurance company.
Okay.
And some of those write-offs are because of that, and some of those write-offs were because of a change of insurance that they, the jail took.
Yeah.
And did not notify us in a timely fashion, so our billing company could charge the right insurance company.
Okay, so we are doing less calls.
We are doing less calls up there, and, and some of the nursing homes too. But again, a lot of the, if it's a priority one call, ALS is needed for either of those facilities, we still go. And most of the time, we're there for those times they don't have a truck.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Chief, if I remember correctly, we switched to the bundled rate because basically we get higher insurance reimbursements, rather because they would, basically because the insurance companies changed the billings, is that why we switched to the bundle rate essentially?
We changed to the bundling rate because our ambulance is prepared to serve those, those services, whether it goes out for a Band-Aid or if it goes out for a cardiac arrest. The ambulance has expenses that were incurred, and the insurance company was recommending that we go to this bundling to help cover some of those expenses for these expiring medications, for these expiring, you know, intubation tubes, for the maintenance of the defibrillators, that all roll into the cost of the ambulance, and that's why we went to the bundling.
Did it increase our collections?
The only time it would increase our collections is if we went on a call and I went as a BLS and I took that patient and I did not provide oxygen. I'm still giving, we're, we're charging at the main rate, but we didn't pay for the price of the oxygen.
So the answer should be yes, then, that it, before we would say we gave you oxygen, the rate, I'm going to make up numbers, the rate's 800, the oxygen and this, that, and the other thing brings it to our current rate of 1,035.
Bundling.
Now it's 1,035 to go out the door.
Correct.
So I would assume then that the answer would be, we probably made a few more bucks.
You would not see it in our numbers.
Okay.
And again, I have tried to come up with a reasoning, and again, that's why I look at what we are getting back in revenue, we are not getting back anywhere near 1,035 on these calls. If you look at our spreadsheet, we are getting $342 for Medicare, we are getting whatever the insurance company might pay, and then that copay is going back to the patient, who a lot of them have not responded, have, have just, you know, not paid, some of them have paid what they can, other ones, it's just not showing up to get us that, and I can get you a number on what our total, whether we are close at all to that number, but we are not.
No, I don't see, I've seen it at work.
I'm just looking at the numbers month in and month out, and it's just not a...
I know what write-offs are for ambulance companies, and it's...
It's just not pretty.
It's, probably 60% versus, billing versus collection for the private ambulance companies anyway. They bill, they get about 60% of what they bill at the private level.
And the thing that bothers me is for a country that has, everybody's supposed to have a health insurance plan, I just question, how do we, how do we not get 100%?
That's a whole, that's a whole nother discussion.
So any other questions?
Raj? At this time, with the bundling, BLS non-emergency base, base rate and the BLS emergency rate, both are same?
We do not do BLS non-emergency transports. Those would be for like a private service that would just take someone from a nursing home and bring them to a, to a hospital, and they also have a transport rate for an ALS where you'd need a paramedic to transfer that. We don't do those type of calls. We're only an emergency ambulance service.
Thank you. And then just in regards to, for instance, Sterling?
Yep.
They don't have the, you're going to go, you're going to pay that first rate, and then whatever they use, it could raise that number up, so it's not showing...
They call it à la carte.
Yeah.
You get an airway, you pay for an airway. You get oxygen, you get oxygen.
110, yeah.
And you keep adding that to your top of your bill.
And then Rutland, for instance, they also pay, charge extra for all those things?
Correct. Same with Holden.
So in reality, our rate is...
We're still less than, than those others.
With the, with the bundle.
And again, I just didn't think, you know, we had knocked around 5%, and, you know, that's $50, we've knocked around, you know, and then I was going, well, 10% is quite a bit, and that's why I'm here before the board, because 10% is a lot of an increase, but again, we didn't go with one last year, and I think we need to catch up sometime, and we have a brand-new ambulance that's going to be talked about later, which is also going to be a big expense to, to try to maintain.
So in regards to bundling, it doesn't seem like any of the surrounding towns have done it, they just haven't done it yet? I'm sure you talked at meetings and things like that.
Well, I have a spreadsheet of, of more towns.
Just the ones you used here, around us.
Yes, but there's probably only, I'd say, a quarter have gone to the bundling concept. And it was our insurance company that really promoted it and wanted us to do that. A lot of these other companies, they've gone to a different billing company, they use different billing companies, and they might have a different idea, but...
Now, how often would, would an ambulance go out and just be the base rate if, if we weren't bundled?
So on about 1,000 calls, about 300 of those calls is at the basic BLS rate.
Just the base rate, you didn't have to use any of the extras?
Correct, some of them, you know, mental health transports, some of them, again, we're working with a medical control and a doctor, and it went full circle. It was oxygen, oxygen, oxygen. Now the school of thought is less oxygen, don't use it unless they're really, their stats are really low, because they were finding that I think it could even, you know, hurt the patient if they didn't get a, if you gave them too much oxygen. And we've done this with the IV treatments, too. We went from giving people a 500 bag of saline to a, to a little vial that they squirt into the patient's arm so they have access if they need it, but the school of thought has really gone full circle on what was happening was, I believe, people were drowning because they were filling them up with so much fluid, when they really didn't need the fluid. They might need medications and things, and that's what that IV was doing for them.
The reason why I'm asking these questions is because really, our rate is, in most cases, substantially lower than other towns, because once these towns like...
But then you jump up to our ALS rate, if you go to our ALS rate, we're at 27...
ALS emergency one, 1792.
1792, I'm sorry. You know, opposed to the 1350.
Because we're adding all these other things to it.
Correct. And then the ALS two one is, is, you gave more than one medication, you gave two medications, so you jump up to almost $1,000 more.
But an ALS rate, the, the non-bundled ALS rate is, ALS one is still going to be higher than our 1792, because they're getting the 1350, but you're using at least two or three of the ones below, if not all of them, if it's an ALS, for, I'm asking, I'm not telling.
When you do an ALS call, usually you roll in about $900 worth of expenses into that call.
It goes over, it goes over.
Right, so, so...
Again, if, if that patient warrants it. Do we do every one of those? Every time we get a paramedic call, most of the time, they get that pig-tailed IV in their arm, they'll get on a cardiac monitoring, and pretty much that will keep them happy till they can get to the hospital.
That adds between 260 and 503 in the towns that don't bundle.
Correct.
So it brings that one and two both up.
And again, we could look at them all and just say we're going to go up by 10% on all of them, but it's just, I, I just feel as though for what we use our expenses on, the ALS, the BLS was the one that we were really hurting on.
What, what percentage of the calls pay these prices? 10%? 5%? The full...
100%.
Private ambulance...
I'd say you'd be pushing...
Pushing at a 5%?
I bet you, it might be around 15 to 20. Do we get anything close to that?
The private ambulance services, when I, with the work that I do with them, about, I would say, less than 10%.
Paid the total.
Pay, and the ones that do pay are the ones that have the one-off insurance company where there's no relationship with the, the private ambulance biller, you know? If somebody had Michigan Blue Cross Blue Shield and they were out here, there's no relationship, there's no negotiation. there's no relationship, there's no negotiated rate, so they pay, they just pay the full price, but that's, it's a rarity.
Chief?
Yes.
So we had the bundling this year and compared to the write-off last year, is this low or high? This year write-off?
The rate is the one that we.
No, right, written off.
Well, we haven't got to write offs yet, but we're gonna go to that next.
Next one, is it, is it low or high compared to last year?
Let's finish this.
We can, we can wait on.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I mean, like I say, we are substantially lower. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, as long as you feel you can run the department with what you're suggesting, then that's.
Well, I, I wish I could, but again, I don't see this, this money, this money goes into the fund. You know, and it, it goes into the general fund. It doesn't come into the fire department fund. So again, this, to run the ambulance the way we do, we have a lot of other things to do. We are doing fire protection twenty-four hours a day. I couldn't even tell you what, I can tell you what it'll cost, but it's no way.
No, I'm not saying to fund the whole department. I'm saying just because we're substantially, I think, adding up any of these, we're substantially lower.
Yeah, even with the ten percent increase, we're still gonna be the lowest of all the towns around.
Yeah.
And again, I just don't know how, how high you want me to go before people will say.
I gotta ask her that question.
I don't wanna know that.
Well, one of the things that the chief and I talked about was the fact that, you know, while the policy, you know, says that we will bring the rates before you annually in January or, you know, the start of the year, it doesn't mean that we can't come back to you. If, you know, we watch the revenue that we get in based on the new rates that are approved and if we start to have concern that the revenues are dropping, we may come back to you and say, you know, we were too conservative, that we'd like to give consideration to increasing the rates more and these are the reasons why. I can't say right now that we're gonna need to do that, but we do watch the revenues that come in. And if we feel that there's reason for concern, we'll come back to you to have that discussion again.
Go ahead.
Historically, the ambulance receipts fund has been used to pay for new ambulances and then it has funded a, a part of the general fund. You know, we can say it's earmarked for the, the fire department, but it's funded part of our general operating budget.
The ambulance portion of the fire department budget, correct.
And it is, I haven't looked at that in the past couple of years. I know that was, the, the amount available to fund, to go into the general fund to fund the ambulance portion of the fire department was trending downward. Has that continued?
So you'll see when we, when we go through the budget presentation, you'll see that what we're doing is we're slightly increasing the annual allocation set aside for the new ambulance because new ambulances are increasing the cost. And correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but I think what we were planning on was two hundred and seventy-five from ambulance receipts to go toward ambulance portion of the budget?
Yes, she wanted to increase it a little bit just to make up some of that, that revenue that we haven't been seeing. We're gonna be, we're about the same as we were for the last three years. She gave me the last three years for, from now, from July till December. And it was like one ninety-seven and last year I believe it was like one ninety-four. So we're, we're close, but three years ago, we were at like one seventy-nine. So her fear was we don't wanna get another bounce down like that and not be prepared to cover the, the. What it is, is the accounting is looking to put a little chunk of money aside each year for the replacement of the.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand completely that.
We haven't really done that in the past. It was like you kinda went in and scooped it out and you bought the ambulance. Now she's really trying to say, we're gonna start putting a little fund aside out of these receipts. But she wanted to be careful because she realizes those receipts are used for other things and didn't wanna crush other things. So she just wanted to increase it one year, I believe, was increase it to that sixty-five to bring it up.
Yeah, but we'll have all those numbers for you.
So this, let's call it thirty thousand dollar increase in ambulance billings should help to shore up that.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, I mean, again, the residents that are watching can't see this chart that we have in front of us. But even when we go up to the, the extra hundred dollars roughly, even if we added all the other things into it, we're still almost average with all the towns around here, except for Sterling.
Was, and again, because we are at that bundled rate, we're probably just, we're a little less.
I'm only, again, I'm looking.
We're not, we're not coming in, if, if we had seen some of the other towns out, you know, towards the middle of the state, towards closer to Boston, they're, they're a lot higher than that. And if you go to the, the average bundling in the center of the ComStar page, the middle page, those rates in the middle of the top fifty of the state, not just central Massachusetts. These are across the state and these are the, these are the amounts that they're saying are the, of what people are paying. So again, for a basic rate is fourteen hundred dollars and fourteen hundred dollars. You know, but again, that's everybody kinda pushed together and they average it out of their top fifty. I think they had like two hundred and fifty clients, but they kinda only use the top fifty.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new rates presented by chief for, I guess it's the BLS rates going up and the mileage you're.
And mileage, I think, you know, with the price of fuel and the price of maintaining these ambulances is, has gone up tremendously. It's not like you can bring it to the, to the Jiffy Lube and have this thing maintained. You have to have a company come in.
For the public, the mileage is going from twenty-nine thirty a call to thirty-two, twenty-three a call, so it's less than three dollars per call.
To help with that. And again, some of these other towns, they're running a three-hour call. You know, by the time they leave that stop, we're about seven minutes away from UMass, which is one of our more frequented hospitals. So we don't have that runaround time that the ambulance is out of service for three hours in that extra mileage. So that's why I feel is a little increase would be good, but we don't need to go crazy.
We're still substantially lower than some of the other towns.
Correct.
Six to forty-four, thirty-five, yeah. Okay, so I have a motion, second and a second. Any other discussion?
I just, one thing I wanna say is, based on our rates, I know ten percent is, is a, a high increase. I personally wouldn't have an issue if, if you see, I know that it was trending downward. I'd rather fix it in increments than all of a sudden say, hey, we gotta come, oh no, we don't have enough money. Now we gotta go up to fifteen hundred because we gotta make up a shortfall. So I, I would prefer to see a smaller increase, increase more often than, than a large increase because we got in a hole moving forward.
Yeah, I would agree with. Well, and I mean, this is the second time I've come before the board with these rates and this is why I wanna stay on this. This, you know, annual required meeting, which was, you know, part of the bylaw. So we do keep track of these and I am keeping better run of the, the call volume and the costs and what things are costing. And that's why we have a little better write-off report than we have in the past.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion hearing? None, all in favor?
Aye.
A toast? Okay, so next item you have, we've already talked about it, is the fiscal FY seventeen write-off report.
So this year, I, you know, worked with the billing company and I requested I needed to go back from a, from a fiscal year to a calendar year so that I could get the seventeen numbers. And a lot of these, some of them, I'm still cleaning up old runs from the previous write-off report from two thousand fourteen, which they're over a year old, there's not much we can do about. So I've been trying to be more attentive to getting to the ambulance billing write-off reports, doing them in a timely fashion, learning about the process. The process has changed a little bit, but I fax them into the company, they take care of it. I'm still working on getting better addresses because some of our patients we pick up and they're unable to give us an address. The dispatcher, when they were right next door to my office was helpful. I'm trying to work with our new dispatch facility to see if they could help accommodate with bad addresses, which is a portion of why we can't get paid because we don't know where the patient's from. We go into a hospital, they wanna know how old they are, their date of birth, and that's pretty much all they ask. They don't ask for a card, they don't ask for any more billing information other than that. So ComStar does what they can on their end, but we do our best on ours. So the write-off report, as you can see, thirty, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two and change were for people that had deceased. In the policy, it was that we could not charge for people that had expired. So that's self-explanatory. The next one down, these are those write-offs that were aging, they're over, over one year old or longer. There wasn't anything else I could do and ComStar suggested that we get them off of the books. If for some reason, somebody gets a good heart and wants to pay their bill, by all means, we'll take that money back in. And that was ten thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The next one, there was a little something we could do. These were ones that were written off, but they were written off, but I also sent them off to the collection agency to see if we could get a portion of our, our ambulance receipts. Our ambulance billing company did everything that they're empowered to do through the town with their three letters. They try a call, they try to find the insurance company, they use their internal sources to try to track down those people. All else fails, we send it off to the FFR. Our rate collecting on these hasn't been too good. So I don't hold a lot of hope, but at least it made me feel like I was at least trying to do a due diligence to try to get something for these people that use this service. The next one, it's kind of the same thing, except they were written off, but then these were sent and they were put on the person's credit report. Because they were, they were acknowledged that they had a bill, they didn't choose to do anything about it. The only course of action I had was to send it off to their credit report. So if they go off to try to buy a new car, buy a home, they're gonna say, well, you owe the town of West Boylston that one thousand thirty-five dollars before you can buy your new car. Unfortunately, I think a lot of these folks that have not paid these are not out buying brand-new cars. So the grand total for two thousand seventeen was sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. And again, it, it just says that we have exhausted all our, our means that we had. They were sent off to collections, they were sent off to the FFR and that was about the best that we could do. Or they, they've passed on and we didn't have any recourse.
Any questions in regards to this?
Chief, how, how long do we wait before we send it off to the FFR? About?
I get these reports on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
A lot of them, I, I try to do them either bimonthly or quarterly and get on them because I realize the clock is ticking because I only have one year to, to get.
Yeah.
If it goes over a year, if it's a car accident or something that's in litigation, we can go longer than that, but usually the one a year. So I've tried to be more timely with all of these. The girls have been great that I've been dealing with, helping me along and kinda prompting, get those reports in. And I send them off and then I'll get my report back and I'll say, well, how come these three people were here? And three of them happen to be for the jail. And I said, well, this is absurd. How can my jail not be paying me for these three calls? How could you not know where five Pollex Tivman drivers? And she said, well, and that's when we learned that they had changed insurance companies, but didn't notify the billing agency. So we lost out on three calls. Those were just, that's just one example. So that's what we're trying to do. On a quarterly, at the latest, more often, if I have more time, I try to get them off quicker because now, now I've run down from probably twelve sheets, I'm down to about six. And it's just a check the box and again, send it off. Cause my fear was if I was writing things off, I felt it was like when you had told me that I had the right to, you know, when we increased the write-off amount, well, that's a little differently than us. We're just getting it off the books so that the accounting office isn't gonna say, hey, you made five hundred thousand dollars last year, where is it? It just kinda takes it off the books. If we get our money back, it goes back in the fund, but it's not playing with pretend money, so.
So before it goes to Experian, that's another waiting time before it's reported?
Usually I have the option. Again, I can send it off to the Experian or I can send it off to the collection agency. Some of them are combined, so the now, the FFR, the collection agency does, does their thing. And when they get frustrated and can't find anything, they'll put it on a credit report.
Okay, and different financial institutions use different credit bureaus? So who picked, I'm just curious, who picked Experian?
It was picked with the company, the billing company.
Okay, okay, just curious.
Cause I even asked, well, who's FFR? And that's when I first, first Financial Resources. And I'm like, well, and there was no option checkbox to, to pick who we were using. If you think there's one better, I could suggest it.
Can, there's three different credit bureaus. Can you just inquire why we're only doing Experian and not the other two? Their names escape me. Shalana probably know who they are, she's the banker.
Of course I do, ten minutes ago, cause that's where.
So why are we only using Experian?
Yeah, Experian TransUnion and there's one more. Yeah, so there's three main credit, if we're sending it to one, it shouldn't be, it should literally be a checkbox to send it to, I think, to send it to the other ones.
Okay.
Cause a lot of financial institutions only use certain ones and I don't know if it'll be a big help, but I'd rather, if there is an option, to do more than one.
Experian, it does not, it's almost chance of buying a car. We put on a credit because they just overlook, most banks overlook anything medical related.
And if it's, if it's one or three, it's not gonna.
It also, you only get like ten percent, ten cents on a dollar now anyhow.
Correct. So we're not getting a lot back. That's why I'm saying, don't get up your hopes that we're gonna.
Is there a cost associated with it?
Not that we see. It, they take it off of whatever they get.
So it's not costing us anymore to have this reported?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and just so the public knows, we're, we're saying there's sixty-six thousand dollars written off. That doesn't mean that the thousand thirty-five dollars we charged, we, per call, we collected all sixty-six thousand. There are, the Medicare, Medicaid rate reimbursements is about three hundred and thirty dollars. That seven hundred and change is, is a contractual adjustment that's written off internally and it's not included in these, hey, this is money that we could, we have a chance of collecting, that we could collect. So our write-offs for the ambulance, what we charge and what we actually write off, just the way the system works, is substantially more than the sixty-six thousand dollars.
Some of these are over years and years, it's not all, some of these are old.
Some of these were back to two thousand fourteen.
Correct.
But I'm, again, I'm trying to clean those up so they don't keep haunting me, so.
Same question, I don't know whether you have the number or not. Compared to the last year, this year, it's, it seems to be low, right? If I remember, it was nineteen.
A little bit, but that was the first write-off report that I had given to the board.
Seems to be a little low.
It is lower and I wish I had that number to give you, Raj, but.
Seems to be low.
I'll get it for you and then I'll, I'll add it to that answer for the Experian.
The reason I asked is, you know, maybe the bundle is better than this, that's why we are getting a low?
No.
No? That's not the one?
It's just last write-off report, we were cleaning up a lot of debt accounts that were just being neglected and, and they just sat in a drawer and they just weren't being acknowledged. And now we're finally catching up to those to keep them cleaned off of our.
So you think next year we'll be seeing less than this?
Um, by a little bit, but it won't be, I wouldn't say it's gonna go away.
I think it'll be years before we clean up everything, then we can have a comparison.
Cause I, I was surprised when I sat down with the interim town administrator, Jim Purcell. And I was like frustrated and looking at it and he goes, boy, you're getting thirty-five percent write-off, that isn't bad. And I'm like, wait a minute, that, that's an awful lot for me, but he kinda set me at ease that, you know, that wasn't bad, so.
Okay, do I, we need a motion to allow this?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear?
So.
Have a motion and do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, and now.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one point? Nancy pointed out, I'm going back to the, the rate increases. Nancy clarified that per the policy, the rate increases do have to be technically voted in a public hearing. So we'll post the public hearing, have you take that official vote then, and then the rates can be increased.
Should we change our motion to move it to a public hearing or should we leave it the way it is?
You can leave your vote the way it is, but we can't go into effect till the vote is taken at the hearing.
Okay.
What on with that?
Requires a two-week posting.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll just miss the March seventh, so.
End of module.
We'll, we'll look to see what we can schedule.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the status on the fire truck and the ambulance.
This was supposed to be brought forward the night of the snowstorm and then we were gonna do it last meeting, but the makeup meeting last. gonna do it last meeting, the makeup meeting last Monday, but the dealer had not gotten back to me with the cost for the ambulance. But since that time, I have firm numbers for the ambulance and for the fire truck. So, on the back of that page are the contracts from the company that they have signed, and one of them, I noticed that she had signed on the wrong line, so they're gonna be going off, if approved, to our town council anyway, to be rewritten, I believe. So, just to bring the board up to speed, we're going for the new ambulance purchase to replace our 2008 Ford Econoline ambulance, which has had numerous problems over the last few years with oil leaks, and we've attempted to have them repaired, and it's just an ongoing problem. So, we're going for an ambulance replacement, and we chose to go with a Ford F450, 550, four-wheel drive, with a Horton cab box, which is the compartment space. Pretty much, I was set on the Ford for a number of reasons. The main reason is maintenance. We have a number of Ford dealers that are close by that we can get that truck to, to get it maintained, instead of having to run it down to Connecticut to be maintained for some of the dealerships. We can take it over to the local one in Holden, we can go to Minuteman, Ford, and then also the company that services the compartment, the box, is Greenwood, which is a drivable distance to do in a day. Some of these other dealers, they're so far away, they charge you a service fee, just like getting your refrigerator fixed. You pay for the time the guy leaves the door, till the time he gets to your thing, and then he stops the clock on the repair. So, you're getting these service calls that were, we just had to have our other ambulance repaired, it was $465 to pay to have the service guy come from Maine to repair the back of the truck, get back in his truck and leave. The total cost of the repair was like $200. So, it just, it was kinda frustrating, and that's why we've kinda leaned towards the Ford and the Horton. Greenwood is the only dealer that sells those two components together, and they were also the number-one pick out of our, we had a committee put together that did a search for the fire truck. We had put out the offer to three different companies, after narrowing it down, going to some shows, looking at other trucks. We had narrowed it down to three companies, and we sent them out and said, this, we'd like you to give us a proposal for a truck. We got back, heard back from two out of three. One of them did not even acknowledge, they came and met with us, we never got anything Come to find out, they ended up selling the type of, they ended up taking on a new...
New line.
A new line of fire trucks in the midst of our negotiations, and I don't know why they didn't come back and say, hey, by the way, we're selling apples now instead of pears, but they didn't. And so, we kinda pushed them aside, and then we narrowed it down to this E1 or a KME. And then, the push came down to, after the committee looked at it, they're very similar vehicles, the big change was that the E1 has a smaller pump configuration with the style pump that they use. And what this does is, it gives us more compartment space in this vehicle, which was very important to this committee, because we are getting rid of our old rescue truck and our engine three. So, we're downsizing from two vehicles to one. So, compartment space was a very big, important factor to the committee. And on this, the other benefit going with the Greenwood was, for the first time, I believe, the fire department is using the Metropolitan...
Metropolitan Area Planning Council Collaborative for Procurement.
Procurement, which is like a state bid process. Takes out all the negotiating of getting bids and fighting it out. They do the background, they do the check on all the, on the vehicles to make sure that they are following the state guidelines under 30B, and that's why I left that paragraph in the middle of that. That was cut right from their website to say that they do it. A lot of the area chiefs have used this program and were very happy with it. With buying two trucks, we were only, we only had to buy one, one fee, pay one fee for the use of this program. So, we paid $6,000 for the use of this program, instead of $6,000 for one, or $450, $4,500 it would've cost for the ambulance, because you pay 1.5% of the cost of the truck, or a flat fee of $6,000. But the ambulance is kinda rolled into this, because we are using the same purchasing company for both vehicles.
So, the price for the ambulance is $294,800?
Correct.
And the price for the fire truck is?
Correct. And you have the contracts on the back of that, they're attached to that? And what the town is, usually does, is they take those contracts, they send them off to legal counsel, who rewrites them, I believe.
What we do is, we establish our own contract and attach their version to it as an appendage to our contract.
Okay, do we have any, so, do we have any questions on this issue?
The staff that we have on board now, is there gonna be any extra training needing to drive these particular new vehicles? Are they similar?
They're very similar to what we have now, they're very similar to the size of our vehicle that we have now. A lot of times, the company will come out and do an in-house training. And what we usually do is get as many people that are drivers to take that training as possible, and then we usually have them filter through and change that training to other The pumps are pretty much the same configuration we're using now, we haven't really changed that much. There's a few bells and whistles that they've added with backup cameras and things that weren't around the last time we purchased the truck, so with that, no. There's not really any other training that's involved. On the ambulance, again, the last ambulance was about $250,000. So, you might say, well, why did it go up by, you know, $50,000? And as we had written up the proposal, what we did is, we've added in an electric stretcher, which, one, it takes the safety for the triple K specs that were required for the country on the stretcher being secured, so it wouldn't dislodge during a rollover. But it also, with the limited manpower we have, it takes a lot of burden off people's backs lifting and lowering the patient.
Completely understand.
Very, you know, they're very concise, they're battery-operated, they've come a long way from where they used to be. And then they go onto a track, and the track loads the patient into the back of the ambulance. So, that was a big feature that we were really looking for, because a back injury will cost the town a lot of money if something should happen, and we don't have a lot of staffing available, and unfortunately, the patients are getting a little bigger sometimes, and they're harder to deal with, and you don't want to delay the transport when we can have this loaded in. So, there will be some training with that, that Striker would come out and show us.
Yeah, my only question is, what was appropriated at the town meeting for the fire truck?
575, I believe?
Okay.
We're under for both appropriations.
It was 575 and 295.
Okay.
Boy, $100 and $300.
It came down to... Yes, I think you might have answered this one earlier, Andal. What's going to happen to the retiring ambulance and the fire truck? Are we getting any money for that? Is it adjusted in this?
The ambulance, they have given us back some funds in this contract, but it's not, it's not cast in stone that we have to accept that. It is an agreement with us that, if we're not happy with that, we can try to sell it outright, which it could be used as a third ambulance for people, as like a spare for backup. If they need, you can't use it as a primary ambulance, but they could use it as a backup. And it might be worth more to someone, like a private ambulance service, or someone else that might purchase it. And we haven't pursued those costs.
You are not planning to keep the ambulance?
No.
We'll be selling it. Same thing for...
We're trying to downgrade, down our fleet number for the maintenance, and we just don't have the personnel to be running the extra fire trucks. We just don't get them out the door.
Same thing for the fire truck? Or we won't be getting any money?
Uh, the fire truck, unfortunately, the salesperson came out, he did a walk-around of the fire truck, and pretty much, the sales, the vice president called me back and said, on the fire truck, there's really not much value to that vehicle.
So, it goes to the junkyard?
Um, she said, that's probably gonna be where they'd end up sending it. We can, again, try to do it through a private sale, some farmer might want it to water his fields or something like that. There is a program that'll send them overseas, I haven't looked into that. And again, I don't, it's more like a donation than an increase. The rescue truck might be, have a little more value as a, I don't know, what you call it?
Utility vehicle.
A utility vehicle for another department that has the room and maintenance that they can take care of it.
So, neither of these prices reflect any money coming back for anything?
The ambulance...
Has, they gave you a trade-in?
It's like online for, it's not much. It was ridiculous, and we kicked back, and they gave us a little bit more. I think it was around $5,000 or a little over.
What year is that truck?
The ambulance is 2008.
What year are the fire trucks?
The, both of them are, oh, 25 years old.
The ambulance is 10 years old, and it's worth about $5,000.
Fire apparatus now, they're looking at 20, anything over 20 years, for an engine, 30 years for a ladder.
Right.
They're not standards.
Okay, any other questions in regards to this? Now, do we need a motion to move forward with these contracts?
Motion to authorize the procurement.
Someone?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Anita, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think the chief did a good job in explaining it all.
Okay. Motion, a second, hearing, no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Thank you. You didn't let the lieutenant give any...
I was hoping to hear. He was here in case I got stuck. And I'm sorry I missed that last meeting, that you talked about my building repair abatement project.
We'll talk, when we do it again, we'll...
We're working on it, so...
Let us know. I know. So, we have one other thing, we have an AFG grant application, do you want to, did you want to give us information on this? Anita looks like she wants to...
I don't have the details of that in front of me.
So, you want to just put it off to a future meeting?
Well, I did it. The AFG grant has been applied for, and we chose to go for all replacement equipment for the new fire engine. I'll let the lieutenant talk.
So, the chief and I have taken, as the chief said, we're combining both vehicles into one, and we did an inventory of some of the apparatus, some of the equipment on the apparatus that needed to be updated, such on the rescue, as the airbags to lift vehicles and such. They have a 10-year lifespan. We're just a little bit over that, by an additional 20, 15 years. So, we took and looked at what job and what function we want this new engine to take on, to relieve some of the burden on the primary engine right now. So, combining the two vehicles, putting some rescue equipment on, coming into line more with the National Fire Protection Agency regulations of airbags, additional saws, lightweight and quick rapid deploy boats for our vehicles. They have this Orion boat, it's called. It basically fills up with one of our SCBA bottles in less than 30 seconds, and it can be stored in one of the compartments of this new rescue. So, the chief and myself kind of put together a list, and we felt the past three years, we've gone for the apparatus, and unfortunately, for the grant, and haven't received that. So, we did get it through at town meeting, so we felt we wanted to equip the equipment, some of the other equipment that we did, including the bid, is a strut system. So, if we had a car accident with unsteady vehicles, we currently do not have a strut system to hold that vehicle in place. If we needed to cut, we'd have to rope it up. This system would actually tie it together in basically triangles, and hold that vehicle steady while we worked on it and around it. So, it's another piece of equipment that we don't have, that we wanted to get on this equipment.
So, this is all...
The AFG is covering all that stuff that we want to bring over, some additional hose, additional safety equipment, the saws, the struts, the rapid deployment boat to replace an aging water rescue platform that we had to throw on the back of the truck if we go back and get it, throw in the back, pick up and go to the rescue call. Now, it's literally in a bag that's this big, take out an air bottle, fill it up, rapid deployment.
And then one other thing was the ventilation fans. They have battery-operated ones now. One person can lift them, you don't need a cord rail, power for it. It's lightweight, and with the limited manpower, one person can go get it, stick it in the person's house, ventilate the house. Okay, it's all clear, they shut the battery off, they take it back to the truck.
And that's everything that you applied for within this grant?
Correct.
So, when will you, do you think you'll hear about that?
We usually hear about July.
July issue, they'll start to issue minutes every Friday.
So, the history of the grant with my administration was, we went for a fire truck. I cried boo hoo, said we were replacing, you know, an aging, non-NFPA compliant truck, we're getting rid of a rescue truck, boo hoo. And then, you know, they said, well, geez, you don't have that many structure fires, why don't you try for a forestry truck? So, the following year, I wrote the grant for the forestry truck. Again, it's not like we have a ton of forest fires, and what happened with the program is, it used to be hot and heavy. Now, they're kind of, running out of funds, they don't get as much funding as they used to, and I see that the trend seems to be going, you know, bigger departments seem to be getting them for more necessity equipment. We will be doing that again eventually for our SCBA, our breathing apparatus mechanisms, because that's gonna expire, they get old, and we will be going back to that grant for this. But we kinda had a clear view, because, you know, again, in my narrative, it was a boo hoo, we've tried for a fire truck, and, you know, we weren't able to get that, but could you please help us with this equipment for the new truck? And again, we went in with, I think it was $75,000 or $80,000 total for the grant, instead of, you know, $550,000. And again, there'll be a certain percentage that the town's responsible for, but it will be far less than what it would be if we had to buy it all ourselves. So, keep your fingers crossed.
I believe we wrote it up. Seems to be that a lot of people getting grants, it's multi-jurisdictional, or affects multi-jurisdictional. So, it was written in with the jail, the highway interstate, into correlation between departments with the MSP, so we kinda took that.
I cried hard.
We kinda tried to get as many, and it's all truth, because those are the departments we are dealing with, we are doing mutual aid, and so on and so forth. So, we're trying to paint the picture of, this is not just West Boylston, this is, you know, interstate and...
The reservoir was a big one.
Right. And I know, chief, you, we all know that you try for every grant, I'm sure you don't, you don't see a Greg come by your desk and say, I'm not gonna go for that one, I don't need it. You take the time, and I'm sure you apply for it, so. Any questions in regards to these? We've talked about grants a lot tonight, so I appreciate you trying, but just let the town administrator keep us up to date, hopefully.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Okay, next item is $190,374 Complete Street Grant Award. Anita, do you want to, authorization and signing, do you want to update us on that?
Right, we, the Transportation Committee did a great job at putting together the prioritization plan under the Complete Streets Program. You recall that we brought that to you approximately nine months ago, where we were looking to establish priorities on complete streets eligible projects, and most of ours involve sidewalk improvements to improve the walkability in our town areas or commercial areas. So, as a result of that, we applied for Complete Streets Tier 3 Grant, and... And lo and behold, we actually were awarded, um, one hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars for a portion of our prioritization plan. And, um, so tonight we need to, um, vote to accept that award and to authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Any questions on that or do we hear a motion?
I have a question.
So we can go next here, right? For more money?
Yes, I do not believe there's a waiting period on this grant program. I believe you can continue to apply annually.
So if I remember enough, we did put it in like a twenty-five different prog, different projects.
We did. We broke it out into different segments of projects and estimated for them in our prioritization plan when we thought we'd be ready to accomplish them.
So we will be choosing some to deal with this, to use this one, one hundred and ninety thousand.
So we, we, um, they have chosen for us which portion of the prioritization plan they're going to allow us to use this for. And this, um, the, the project that they've included was for the section of sidewalks over, um, beyond the school area, um, Pine Arden area. I don't have the list of the roadways in front of me, but one portion of the prioritization plan was to, um, bring sidewalks from the school area out to the residential areas beyond there so that it now creates a contiguous sidewalk area from those neighborhood areas through the school to the Goodell Park system and connects with some of the new sidewalks that we have coming into the center of town.
You know, I thought when we, when we were talking, you know, that we could choose any projects, but it looks like they chose some project for us.
They chose for us which they would fund for this round.
Okay, thank you. As we've learned, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars doesn't get us a lot of sidewalks.
It doesn't get us a lot, but it's a good start.
If it gets something, we'll take the grant, but I mean, don't, I mean, I don't want the residents to think we got one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, wow, we're gonna have sidewalks everywhere in town.
No, I mean, the, the sidewalk improvement program that, that Nancy was, um-
Close to a million.
It was eight hundred thousand that, you know, so, you know, that was, um, a lot of money to do significant sidewalk repairs.
We get a mile something, I think, out of sidewalks roughly.
You know, to add to this, you know, when we started this, applying for this grant, tier three and, uh, so they said, you know, we could get up to four hundred thousand dollars. I think, you know, a lot, now a lot of, uh, communities are applying for this grant, so they have only a certain amount of the money. So now they, you know, they cut it off to a half for us, you know, and they did pretty good, we get, we get the half.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
So, um, approve and authorize the, the chairman to sign?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion, a second, another discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, John, sign away. You gotta sign the check too with that double.
What's that? He's gonna match it?
He's gonna match it, yeah. He did, he said that under his breath. Consider approving the hiring of Lynn Harding, Harding Smith, the position of assistant town clerk at twenty hours a week, step three of grade three, seventeen fifty per hour. Uh, you can come up, folks.
Hi.
Anita, do you need to add anything or do you?
So I, I just want to open that, um, we posted the position internally for the assistant town clerk position. We did not have any internal candidates, so we went for an outside posting and received, I believe it was seven different applications. Elaine, Elaine the town clerk and I reviewed the applications and chose four individuals to interview for the position. And, um, at the end of the interview process, um, we are bringing forward Lynn's name as the top candidate for your consideration. Um, Lynn is a resident in town, she comes with excellent references, she has all the necessary skill sets, and, um, both Elaine and I are recommending that the board concur with this appointment.
Do the board have any questions?
Yes, gentlemen.
Besides Shavon, does the board have any questions? Go ahead.
So I did read, um, Lynn, I read what you wrote in and how your interest. Can you tell me why, um, your interest in town now? I saw that you worked for the chamber, um, you've been doing that for a while. I also have worked for chambers in the past, so that's very interesting work.
Oh, yes, it is.
Yes. Um, but can you tell us what the interest is for the town of West Boylston?
Well, besides the fact I live here and I love it here, um, it's convenient, it's time for me to change. I've been a graphic designer for twenty years for Frank Carroll. He's in Worcester Small Business Service Bureau. And we did a lot of philanthropy there and a lot of political things and so I'm, you know, I'm well versed on meeting people and raising funds and helping people, which is real important. And he helps so many people. So I unfortunately got laid off, they closed my department. And so it's time for me to start to look at something new and something different. And so, um, I thought this would be a wonderful thing to help people around here and get involved. I know a lot of players in Worcester, but I don't know a lot of the players here, so it's gonna be kind of nice to get to know everybody. Looking forward to it.
Okay. And what would be the one or two things that you really feel that you bring to the position in the town to fulfill this role?
Hmm, well, I'd like to try to work with people and work together and improve anything that I see that I could improve. Because I have never worked in, at the town hall, I'm kind of have to learn as I go on what I can improve on. And I won't know till I start on Monday, I hope. I think Lynn's personality will make a good fit with the town's people.
Okay, nice. So if I was to ask your previous owner to describe you in three words, your previous employer, what three words would they use to describe you?
Happy, sincere, and efficient.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to having you, uh, possibility sitting downstairs and having our townspeople get to know you because that is a big part of the position. And when they call and there's a friendly voice on the phone, that makes a big difference. So that's part of what West Boylston is about. So thank you for coming forward.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I motion that we accept Lynn Harding Smith as presented for the assistant treasurer for twenty hours.
Town clerk.
I mean, town clerk, sorry, sorry.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, thank you. Great before a town meeting, you're gonna love this.
Nice to meet you.
Did we tell you Elaine's not gonna be at town meeting and you have to do the clerk's duties?
Took the week off.
We hired her just in time.
On the job training.
Okay, next item is update snow and ice in accordance with the Massachusetts general law chapter forty-four, section thirty-one B. Consider voting to authorize the over expenditure of FY eighteen snow and ice.
It's not gonna snow anymore.
Chris said so, we're golden.
You don't say that enough. We'll be using it.
Thanks tomorrow, it's not gonna snow anymore.
Okay, um, do you, um-
We're currently in, um, in a deficit of nineteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars. And we're hearing that there may be some snow or ice that we have to contend with Friday into the weekend. So, um, anyways, it's, it's our annual process that we need to authorize continued deficit spending. We have already taken to account, um, that we would be doing deficit spending and we have set aside free cash to put toward that. So I'm hoping that Chris is right and that we don't have too much more snow to contend with. But if we do, we have set aside the funds to deal with it, so we're in good shape.
Okay, so do we, you're just an update on it?
I, I'm actually asking you to vote to authorize the, um, the deficit spending.
We're over. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion?
Wait, yes. I, just so the townspeople know, and Anita, correct me if I'm wrong on this, because this isn't my, my strongest suit. The way the snow and ice budget works is you have to budget at least as much as your previous year. It is the only line item in the municipal budget that you can deficit spend. So it is very, very common, as far as I know, every city in town in the Commonwealth underfunds this line item, keeps money set aside for this line item so that you don't want to try to say, "Oh, this is gonna be a bad winter based on predictions, let's double our snow and ice funding." Now you can never lower it. So it's, it's just a fluke of the budgeting system and so it's, it's, we do this every year and it's, it's not like we messed up on the budget, it's just that this is how this budget line item is handled. That about-
You did it perfectly.
Okay, good.
And every year, every year we, we go through this and we, you know, so, um, so I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anita, if we, if we were to put off the, uh, your goals-
We can put that off, sure.
Would any dates, that would be a problem if we put it off to the next meeting?
No, there's no time sensitive nature to that.
Okay, yeah.
There's several items we could defer tonight if you want to.
Well, I think, um, let's, if, if I come to something, you can let me know, but I think we'll put that off. But the next thing is two thousand seventeen grant records, which we've talked a lot about tonight and you've got the smallest font possible.
I'm sorry, but, um-
But a grant, even with the glad, John, you wanna read this to me, please? I see the total here, but you want to just, uh-
Right. So, so every year we do an update as to the grants that we have been successful in achieving. And you're right, we have between the information session for the senior center project at six o'clock and tonight's discussion with the chief about grants, we have been talking a lot about this today. Um, but the good news is that we have, um, very dedicated department heads and volunteers who do go and seek the appropriate grants for helping to offset the costs of some of our services in town. And for the calendar year seventeen, we brought in, um, just over a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in grants for various different departments. It includes, um, some funds that we received from the state to do a housing plan update. It includes funds that went to the, um, police department for, um, bulletproof vests. It includes, um, a safe grant for the seniors, which is, um, provides certain services to the seniors to improve, improve senior safety. Um, it includes some of the grant funds that we received from the state's, um, nine-one-one incentive program, which we are getting as part of being a regional dispatch center. Um, it includes, uh, some of the sidewalk grant receipts that we previously had talked about. Um, we have, um, CO, um, some annual COA grants, just under twenty thousand dollars. And the library has also received different grants, including the twelve thousand dollar, um, first year of the Holy Cross Library Gift Grant. So those items there added up to a hundred and eighty-two thousand. Above and beyond that, the items that aren't listed in the accountant's tally, um, there were some two hundred and fifty dollars that the library received in, um, Small Libraries' Network Grant. There was nine hundred dollars received from a, a family, um, fund that went to the library in support of the adult reading room. There was, um, thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three in state aid, which is a library incentive grant. So technically that comes in our state aid, but it is tech, it is a grant. Um, so those are, that's a, a total of the different grants that we've received in twenty-seventeen. Um, we are applying, continuing to apply for new grants. Um, most recently, we've applied for a grant for twenty-eight thousand dollars for IT improvements for the town. So, um, I'm very pleased with the way our staff is working on trying to apply for all opportunities.
Could I, I mean, I don't know the answer to this and I don't, I don't want the answer tonight, but could we also seek out of this report, the grants that we might have looked into, uh, we've, didn't get, uh, that we looked, you know, once we read the basic grant information, we said, you know, this will be great, we looked at it, but it just wouldn't work, we applied, we didn't get it. Just to, just to kind of see that, because I know we constantly, I know the fire chief, the police chief, the library, they all do it. And what's not on here is, uh, what the school might have got, correct?
Correct.
This, this, so, I mean, I guess in the future, if we could just ask the school just to report to the town what they might have applied for and received for grants, because I'm, I'm sure there's grants that they received that we don't get on this side of, you know, the town government. And if that's all right with the board.
We can certainly easily give a list of the grants that we applied for and did not get. It would be harder to identify those grants that, um, were-
That you might have looked at, I understand, yeah. So if there's one that pops up and then the school issue, see if they just want to share with us so we can report to the town.
The easiest way to do that would just be to have the accountant list the grants under the school account numbers, so I can get that for you.
If you could ask Roger ones that they applied for and didn't get as well, just to see, I, I'm interested in that figure, just to see how much success we have in what we do apply for.
Okay.
And this is, this total was, I mean, again, the residents can't see it, but it's a little over two hundred thousand dollars we received, you know, two hundred up to forty or fifty thousand dollars. So, um, we try as much, as, as often as we can. So, thank you for that, uh, update. Uh, next item is consider joining class action suit on opiates. Do you want to?
That was an item that had been requested to put on the agenda, it's something we probably, we have time to consider at a future meeting if you'd prefer to defer it.
Do you want to do that? Okay, we'll put that off.
We'll get some information from that, uh, town council on how to do that, because I, I believe it's free to join that, uh, class actions.
We'll get clarification. There's so many communities that are looking at this very issue right now. I'm getting, seeing a lot of email exchange between town managers.
Yeah, so we can put it off for the next of the meeting after that, whatever you feel best.
Okay.
Continued discussion about amendment to policy on business license applications. I, I would just ask that we, we got a lot of emails today in regards to this and I didn't have, I don't know if the rest of the board did, but-
I, I looked at them briefly.
I looked at them briefly too. I would like to sit down and read, read them more if we can put this off unless you have something that's pressing.
No, I mean, this, this, this could easily be put off to the next meeting.
I know there was some questions sent to town council in regards to-
We do have all the feedback now from town council, but, um, you know, this could easily be put on the agenda for the March seventh meeting.
Even without the, I would, I wanted some time to take a look through that stuff. Any, any other issues with that?
Have you, have you received anything on the zonings? I thought, you know, all the emails, I did briefly looked at all the emails.
Of the, the different, the site plan cases?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Did, did they give you any, uh, return or case histories on that?
No, I have not yet contacted town council because what I'm recommending is that at the next meeting of the chairs-
Of the department heads?
They put together a list of questions for town council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll, uh, talk about that unless-
I don't mind putting it off, but can, um, I only glanced at it too, but could you just give us a quick update? If that would be all right?
Sure.
Well, I mean, I think that would be the same as, then we're gonna, it's gonna open questions when I know I didn't read it all.
Okay.
I, I, I saw the emails, I briefly read through them.
Just, just, I'll just give you the topic of, of what the additional information was that came through. It was to deal with the ability for the Board of Selectmen to consider unpaid water or electric bills when looking to approve or renew business licenses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, FYI, half-staff policy review, we can, we can do that, I think. Is that in our agenda package or is that?
Yeah, it was just-
There was nothing for the agenda, um, this was asked for us to be putting it on the agenda, so we didn't really know what point was up for consideration.
Who asked? I mean, if someone wants to speak on this, you pay.
Did you, did I?
You asked the question.
I think I, I just brought it up. I think I, I just brought it up. But we can go over, I, I just think it's good to review and let the people know what the policy is.
Was that in the agenda?
Yeah, it was. So it is, you know, it's, it is laid out and how to go about it. So if people have concerns, I think it's nice to respect the town's people. And I know I've had a couple of questions, people have contacted me, so normally I just tell them to call the town hall, because Nancy has the policy right in front of her, and Anita. So I just thought every now and then, this would be something good to review and let the people know what it's about. I don't think we have to, like, read the whole thing or anything.
Well, I, I think the most important piece that, what brought this up was, was the following. The third policy thinks is the United States flag will, will not be lowered to half-staff for any other purpose, not listed in this policy, other than for individuals who, in the opinion of the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, have contributed significantly to the betterment and welfare of the town. So the policy basically says, somebody that works for the town as an employee, somebody that volunteers for the town on a committee or an elected official of the town passes away, there's different things that address the lowering of the flag to half-staff. But then there's that catch-all of, if there's somebody in town that's done a lot for this town, may not have served in any of those capacities, the chairman may overlook it. So if, if anybody dies in town and somebody feels that they're, I mean, we will try, but if somebody feels that they've made a significant contribution to the town, absolutely call the town, and it will be brought forward. And it's a very easy thing to do, and it means a lot to the family members of, of those who have passed away. So if, if that situation comes up, please contact us if we don't think of it ourselves. I think that was the extent of...
That's, now, you're right. And I don't know, going forward, if there's a way that when the town's flag is at half-mast, if we could put it on the sign? You know, the town sign that we have?
Why? Why it's a half-mast? No, you mean, why, why it's a half-mast?
Oh, yeah, why it's in half-mast. Because I think, when, like, when I drive by, and if I see it, it always catches my eye. And if I maybe miss something, but I think it's just a nice way to communicate, because we have that nice new sign.
But it's usually half-staff for what, day or, I mean, it's twenty-four hours sometimes, right?
It depends. The flag will be lowered to half-staff by a presidential declaration or a governor's declaration, and they will say, this event happened, keep the flag at half-staff until, a lot of times, it'll be the burial of the individual. So it may be three or four days.
Correct.
And then there's other flag etiquette things, reasons as well.
So I guess if we wanted to add that, we would have to have a hearing and change the policy. So if that's what the board's asking, I guess we'll have to schedule a, to change the policy in regards to flags at half-staff.
You mean, just to put it on the, on the...
Just to add, yeah. I mean, I, I think it would be part of the policy then.
It has to be part of the policy, okay?
I mean, I, it would be nice. I know, I need, Nancy, do you have...
Do we need a vote for that?
My only concern is that it may be a longer explanation, and we have three lines with eighteen spaces per line. Maybe another option would be to put something on the front page of the website.
Because it might be, it might be Joe Smith, you know, and then everybody's saying, well, who was that? Well, Washington said that this gentleman was, so it's, it's hard, I think, to put it in a...
Yeah, Governor declares lowering flag for...
Or, or just Governor declares. I mean, not everybody, like, I'm not saying have a lot of detail. I'm just trying to see if there's a way that we could get a short and sweet explanation out there. People look at that sign.
I, I get it, and I, I think short and sweet would be good, but...
But, so do you, do you want, we need to amend the policy to do either?
I don't think you need to amend the policy.
We don't.
We could just put, you know, R.I.P. in the person's name.
Right.
But it's, you can't, we can't...
But what happens if it's because of a mass shooting type thing?
Right, we can't, yeah. How do you, how do you even list that? Because of the, yeah, I mean, and then, then we have to, Nancy does it, so it's two or three days it might be lowered. You know, if it gets, goes down on Saturday morning and comes back on Monday, that would mean somebody would have to come to town hall, change the...
No, I just, I just program it in.
No, if you know in advance, right.
If I know in advance, yes, I just put the times and the dates.
You can program it, okay, I know. Whatever, like I say, I think it would be, it would be nice to know, but I think the website personally...
Yeah, that might be...
You can put a lot more detail, and you can actually put the whole letter from...
Right, I think...
It'll give the best...
Yes, it will give the background.
Most of the time, when the flag is at half-mast, people are gonna know.
Because it's been in the news.
Right, it, it's...
And I think it's a different story if it's, if it's a town resident. I think it could be, then the name would, might be noticed, or it could be limited, and people would know it. But these, the national ones are probably, it may happen at my work sometimes, and everybody in the building's walking around for two or three days and going, why isn't there staff? So that's even when you say the news.
That's true.
Maybe we can do it for the local people.
No, I, I don't mind it on the town website for, or if, if, if it can work to be put on...
I think it would be easier to leave this outside of the policy. It gives us more leeway to just say, okay, you know, if it's a town resident, or if it's something that lends itself to being on the, the sign, we can do that. Otherwise, we could always put it on front page of the website.
And the, I, I have no problem with that. The only thing I like policies for is for when we're not sitting here and Nancy's not sitting there, people know what the, what the board's thought was in regards to this. That's why we have policies in place, all of our policies, to, to tell other people now, can they change it down the road? Sure they could. Would they change something? Probably not. But if it's just an unwritten rule, then in two years, it might be, in two years, it might be...
That's a good point.
It worked for two years, because everybody's thinking about it. But in three years from now, no one's thinking about it anymore, and it doesn't get done. So, I mean, I don't think it, is it a huge, are we putting it, do we have a way to, do we have any other policies that we're looking to review that we could put this in at the same time? I think when, if there is, maybe that'll be the best thing to do is...
Do we have any other policies that have been...
We don't, but, and, and it's not, I, I think we could just tweak it and bring, I mean, we're gonna do the ambulance billing, we could do...
We have to have a public hearing the same night that we do the ambulance billing votes. We could have both public hearings.
Posted and everything, and we can, you can add some of these things. That's, that's what I would ask. I think it's, you know, it's an idea. We just have to figure out how you word it that, that makes it fit, so everybody knows how it works.
I think if we put, posted on the town's website and/or on the electronic signboard, that way...
And it can be at the same thing. It could be at the chairs, you know, it goes to the opinion of the chair, it can go to the chair at that same time. They can, they can discuss what the best way to let the people know. So we'll, we'll look at that for the next time we have a policy or a public hearing. Our next item is old business, Town Clerk stipend tentative. Do you want to...
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that the board defer this one more time. Now that I know what the number of days is that Elaine's been working alone as town clerk, I can bring the actual number to you at your next meeting.
That'd be great. And the next one, consider revisiting board's vote on February seventeenth. This was in regards to the temporary...
Right. On, on Saturday, the seventeenth, the board met with Steve McGriddian to discuss what the options were for a temporary location for the senior center, given that Steve McGriddian, the owner of one-twenty-seven Hartwell, is asking the town to allow him to move the senior center out of the one-twenty-seven Hartwell building to allow him to bring a new tenant, a major manufacturing company tenant, into the building. And on Saturday, after discussion, the vote taken by the board was to agree to move ahead with the modular option. However, we now have additional information that needs to be considered. So there's, you know...
Not just, yeah, if I, I mean, I just, and then myself and Pat will put on a subcommittee to review this stuff. I feel that after we kind of narrowed the search down, we should, the, the board should have looked into the possibility. So we've narrowed it down to these two locations, the Woodland Park on the park, and then the church. I would ask, and I think we have something set in place, because the chairman asked you to do that, is that the board looks at the church, and we have some new information in regards to the church. And I'm all for helping the church if that can be, if that's the route we can go. And Steve also has some more information in regards to putting the buildings on the woodland site, and it's a time issue.
There's, there's some concerns about the feasibility of that option.
Right. But, but where, you know, the town is still, and Pat will say this, we're, we're helping him out, you know, in regards to moving. So I would just ask that we, the board have, have a chance, I think something's set in place. If you can't be there, sort of the church, we'll let you look. Take a ride by Woodland Park, take a look at where it's gonna be. It's to the right of the entrance. That whole area will be worked on. So if we could just, the board can just take a look at those locations, and then we talk about it, possibly at a special selectments meeting or at our next selectments meeting.
What's happening?
Oh, we, we have something in place for Saturday in regards to this, but...
If you're ready.
Yeah, if we're ready to talk about it, then. So if there's any questions, we can answer that.
But, just one quick one. I did drive by Woodland Park, so I'm trying to figure out how many parking spaces we would use. Did we come up with that?
If you're coming down Woodland towards Route twelve, that first entrance into the park, John and I went by and just kind of measured it out. Basically, from that entrance to the park on the top will be the location of it. And that include, I think, when we measured it, it probably includes the ramp. So that entrance will be there, but you'll be entering, and it'll be right there to your right.
Okay, thanks.
And it'll close that area, it'll end that area, and there'll be, there's a walkway down the bottom, so you can still get to the...
Right, okay.
Pat, do you have anything you think to add to that?
Well, the, the, we haven't actually gotten the approval for that site yet, from the Parks Commission yet either.
Correct.
So that, that's, we're working on that angle as well, but that, that, that could be an impediment if they say no. Just don't know what their thoughts on that are yet either.
Right. And then the, and then some new information since then has come out in regards to the church that I think we can talk about. But I think Pat said it many times, and I think the board agrees that we want to try to get the, it's a temporary location till June two thousand nineteen or earlier. We want to get the best location possible. You know, plus work, the best location, I think, is what we've always said. So nothing's gonna be perfect.
No.
But it's, it's, we're gonna get something that will, will work. So if the board can try to, try to go see those two locations, I think that would be great.
So that Saturday meeting is open or executive meeting?
No, the eight-thirty...
The, we have two different things that are hopefully happening on Saturday. One is that I'm trying to get a group tour of the Congregational Church for roughly eight-thirty Saturday morning, and that's been posted as a tentative site visit. I'll confirm with you all as soon as I hear back from the church representative. We then have a selectman's meeting posted for immediately after the senior center information session at the police station. Ten-thirty approximately would be the start time of that selectman's meeting. You would be going into executive session for the first part of that to discuss the lease negotiation portion of this topic, and then be reopening into open session to either make a decision about that, if you're, if you feel you're ready. But we also have some invoicing votes that need to be taken as well.
Are we, are we planning to have that at the police station, or bring the meeting back yet?
No, we're able to have it at the police station.
Good, that's good. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a comment on that?
Yes, I do.
Sorry, Bob, I didn't see you raising your cane at me.
In anticipation of you going back into executive session at some point, I'd like to share these thoughts with you. They're fairly brief. Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Chisholm. I live at ninety-one Hillside Village Drive. I am your appointed liaison for the Council of Aging to the Facilities Implementation and Strategic Planning Committee. Since, excuse me, since last Saturday's selectman's hearing, I have had occasion to speak with several seniors. The consensus of those individuals is that, one, moving to a modular building at Wood, at the Woodland Park is unacceptable. Two, the thought of moving to the Congregational Church is dreadful. As was stated at the hearing, there are no other viable alternatives. I would agree. Therefore, I submit that the senior center should remain in the building at one-twenty-seven Hartwell Street until the end of our lease, which we have every right to do. Additionally, either of the courses of actions put forward at the recent hearing on relocating the senior center were never even presented for consideration to the very committee you have charged with strategic planning. I respectfully request you to vote in favor of keeping the senior, senior center at the present location until the stated termination of our lease in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you for your input. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know you were, I would have got to that quicker, I'm sorry.
I was having fun.
Okay, yeah, so. And town administrator reports, do you want to go with what you think you do, or you can do them all, either way?
I'm, I'm gonna skip over and, and condense some of this, if you don't mind, just for the sake of time for tonight. I do think there's some important things, though, that I would like to bring up. And, and those items that I don't touch on tonight, I'll bring back in my next town administrator's report.
Thank you.
But we do have union negotiations which are starting up for both police, fire, and the newly formed cemetery unions. Police and fire union contracts are, the current contracts are up effective June thirtieth, and so we've been notified by both unions that they want to begin formal negotiations of the new terms of a new contract. And we need to start negotiating the brand-new contract for the newly formed cemetery union. So I'm asking if the board wishes to assign any members from the board to be part of the negotiation team for any of those three negotiations.
So usually we put two members, we assign two members to each?
It's been one or two. It depends on the, you know...
Yeah, I'd be interested in the, the police again, since I've done that the last few years, but I don't, so, do you want to put two, you think, and then if one can't show, do you want to just go with one? I don't remember what we've done in the past.
The DPDW would use one.
We used one, so maybe we just do the one.
I think it's just been one.
We have just done one?
Yeah.
Well, I may add on one more, and maybe I can get some exposure. I, I've never been a part of any negotiations, so.
So, I mean, I'd be, I'd be interested in the police if there's any issue with that. John says he'd be interested in the fire, because you've been involved in that. Do you want to do the cemetery?
Either police or fire, or no, that's fine.
No, I don't want to go alone. So I think, I think we're going single.
So whoever does this would be joining me and the appropriate department head as part of this discussion. One thing I would like to add is that negotiations do tend to take place during the day, because by law, we have to allow the employees to take time from their workday to take part in this negotiation and union activity. So, you know, it's kind of important that you can, if you're gonna commit to this, that you're able to find time to make the...
When are they gonna start?
I'm having startup session meetings in the next few weeks, but that's only to set the ground rules for moving forward in the negotiation.
Friday to May first, there'll be meetings.
Right, so, so I'm anticipating that the actual negotiations may start the last week in April, first, excuse me, last week in March, first part of April.
So in the, yeah, so in the past, I've been involved in many negotiations, and meetings have been later in the afternoon. I haven't had any issue with during the day. I mean, I know that, for instance, the school, the year is on the school, it was pretty much all nights.
All nights, yeah, and that's the one that I have done for years.
I know, so, I mean, I think we can work around some, some issues instead of eight in the morning, maybe three in the afternoon, which I, has not been a problem in, in the past. So, so do we need, you want a motion on that, or you just want to let...
It doesn't need a motion. I just need, I need to know who to turn to when we're getting ready to schedule these.
The board's okay, I'll do the police.
We didn't discuss cemetery.
Cemetery, John mentioned to me that maybe him and, him and Raj, so you can get an idea on that.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be good.
That's all right, unless someone else wants...
I'm fine, yeah, I can't do three o'clock meetings, so it's not...
Not this time of year.
So you have that, Anita. John's gonna do fire.
Yep.
And John and Raj are gonna do the cemetery.
Yep, and you'll do the police.
Yeah. And if it becomes an issue, I'll bring back to the board that I'm not able to...
Okay.
Just some of those words.
All right. The positive FYI, we do have a Northeastern University intern who has agreed to start working with us. I thank Raj. He reached out to Northeastern when they had their booth at the MMA Annual Trade Show. So we do have a public administration student who wants to help us with the citizen survey process. She's ready to start. I've already sent her some draft documents for her to begin looking at. She does have some experience in helping another community with citizen surveys, so I think it'll be good to work with her. So thank you, Raj.
Oh, that's a quick one.
Yeah.
So we'll get some more information, then we'll meet again in regards to how it's looking. Okay.
Yep. And one other thing I need feedback on, that I really do not want to put off until the next meeting. At our last meeting, we did talk about the fact that the representative from the Department of Energy did tell us that ABM, the ESCO company, did correctly do their measurement and verification reports. She, she looked at that, and she said the, you know, that they did an appropriate process, and, and they, the fact that they're verifying that there was a savings is correct. However, Pat Crowley has mentioned, you know, his continued concern about the data that was used, and was the data actually correct? And Pat, maybe you want to bring this up?
Uh, based on my experience with this company, what they've told us verbally from before we signed the contract, the first review, the second review, I don't trust anything that, that they tell us, whether it's verbal or in writing. I, I don't like that the ESCO project has, you pay a company millions of dollars, and then they have to verify, and this is not on the company, this is just how the state sets up the project. The, the way the state's program works is you hire this company to do the project, and then you hire this company for them to tell you that what they did worked. That would be great if I could, you know, my clients got audited, and the auditor, the IRS walked in, and I said, hey, don't worry about it, it's all said, it works. So I, unless we have an independent review of the underlying data, and somebody can verify all of the information in this report, I put no stock in its validity.
I think it's important that I double-check this myself. I think that's, I agree with you about that. Someone needs to do something.
So I know we had reached out to the initial person, said, go to the state, save yourself the money. The state says the report is done. Did we get any feedback on what, on, you know, the, and I don't know what the underlying data is. That's, you know, I didn't digest the whole thing.
It comes from all the utility billing. But, you know, I didn't want to go back to the, the company again until I knew that there was consensus of the full board to try to get a quote for this additional layer of peer review.
I think it's, well, I think it would be worth it to, to get a quote and have a better idea. We start from there.
To have someone else, a third party, come and give us an idea, because we pay, we pay...
Right.
Just to clarify the agenda, it's ABM, correct?
ABM.
Okay, so it says ABM, ABM. So ABM does it now, and they charge us fifteen thousand?
It's fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand for each annual measurement and verification.
So you're saying if we can look for a third party to come in and maybe...
I, this is, where I think this is... I, this is, where I think this is going is, we get this third party to come in. If the third party says, "You know what, this is fine, everything they said is accurate and correct." The last meeting we had, we just approved the minutes. Roger from the school said he hasn't seen them doing any tweaking in the past year. If they come in and say, "Yes, this is correct," I don't see any reason to continue to have ABM come back for the next seven years at $15,000 to tell us the same thing they told us the first three years. But I don't want to just tell them, "Thanks, guys, we're good," without verifying that the data that they've given us is accurate.
So, you...
Yeah, I can reach out, just to be honest. I didn't want to bother that company again to get a quote, and then have you tell me that you weren't gonna go ahead with it. So, I wanted a consensus from the Board before I go back to that company.
Can you also maybe, maybe just reach out to other towns that maybe have done this, and just see if they've had the same, you know, maybe some town administrators that might have had it? And just to see if they've had the same, the same thought? If that's, if that's all right, I think that's... So, you'll bring something back to us in regards to the third party? So, that's what you're gonna do on your reports for now?
Yep, and the rest I'll carry over to another meeting.
Only a couple there that you missed, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Update on police and senior center. So, the police is still moving forward. There's a few, just a few issues that they've been, they've been working on, but the FIS committee has been up to date on it. And I think there's a couple other things they're looking at, so everything's running smooth.
Yeah, right now, it's just some minor problems with the HVAC that they're still working on. They've had some small problems with some other items, such as the garage door, the elevator. All of those have been resolved. There are no other issues at this time other than this HVAC question.
Okay, and then I just emailed you in regards to the elevator. Maybe we can just get an update?
I did, I sent you, yeah, it's all set.
So, we can report it to the FIS committee, because it wasn't...
Yes.
Okay, and then the invoice is MV Electrical Police Project, invoice number 2218, for $1,118.05. Do I hear a motion?
Some note.
Motion in a second.
Was this part of the original, is this extra?
If you recall from the FIS discussion, this is additional electric work that the department requested to be done after the RAC completed their contractual work. This is the changing of the light switch that they did for increased convenience for the officers.
See, they want the lights to keep going on, to keep going off, sitting in the rooms.
Right, which is, yeah, so they fixed those. So, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion, hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, C and B for the senior center project, invoice number 5686, for $7,140. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion on that one? Again, we bring it up every time. These have all been looked at by the building committee, and they vote to bring them in front of us to pay. So, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion, hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just, I guess, under invitations, I guess it's kind of connected to the senior center project. The special election is scheduled for Tuesday, February 27th, from noon till 8:00 at the Our Lady of Good Council. The special town meeting, this is for the senior center project. The special town meeting is set for Wednesday, February 28th, at 7:00 P.M. And we do have a snow date of March 5th. So, that's at the middle high school, and that's at 7:00 P.M. Both of those will go. Whatever happens Tuesday, Wednesday will still happen, so those will both go. So, please, we have one other article on the town meeting. It shouldn't be long, so if people can come to that, I'd appreciate it. And then we have informational meetings. We have a few more left for the senior center, if anybody has any questions. February 22nd, which is tomorrow, right, Thursday? February 22nd, Angel Brook at 3:00 P.M. And then also, February 22nd, at the library at 6:00 P.M. February 23rd, which is Friday, Hillside Village at 3:00 P.M. And then Saturday, February 24th, come over, hear about the police, hear about the senior center, and take a look at our new police station. It'll be at the police station at 10:00 AM. So, I'll just go to future agenda items or Selectments reports. Hearing done.
Can I just, I did get a phone call today. I know it was a nice day, but I had a couple complaints at the park. The trash bins were overflowing with trash. So, I know it's an exception day, but a lot of people are still using it. So, if we could just get that taken care of, they said it was really bad.
Okay, so, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move to enter into executive session under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Part 2, to discuss contract negotiation with non-union personal police chief.
Okay, so, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Rucha Shukla, Mr. Hadley,
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Ms. Spontzen?
And we will not be entering into open session. There'll be no need to, or we'll...
Correct, there's no other business, there's no other...
There'll be nothing that could come out of this, so we will not be coming back into open session. Thank you very much, have a good night.